Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March 25th, 2021 City Council Budget Workshop. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those of you in online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website, Public comments in reference to the budget items this evening can be sent to publiccomment@lewisstonmaine.gov prior to or during the meeting. And counselors are asked to raise their hand. And just a quick reminder, it's a public meeting, so we should be leaving our video on at all times. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I'm going to turn over the budget workshop to Director Hunter to cover police, drug enforcement fund, fire, 911, TIF, LA Arts, and CDBG. Heather?
Thank you, City Administrator, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Counselors. The first department that we're going to talk about is the Police Department. And I don't know if the Deputy City Administrator wants to bring Brian O'Malley in, but the first thing we've been talking about is the new program and services. And the Police Department had a series of promoting a patrol officer to a detective and a detective to the ranking of sergeant, as well as a contractual service request to fund two crisis workers to the tune of $98,000. Those were workshopped as part of the Police Report, but I didn't know if the Police Chief had anything he wanted to add at this juncture.
Yeah, I just came in the tail end. I kind of missed some of that. I think we're talking about the new...
New programs and service. Sorry, Brian.
Yeah, we had had that discussion with the plan for the the crisis worker to ride along with the patrol officers. That would be a contractual service through Tri County. I did speak to Catherine Ryder, the Director of Tri County, the other day. Right now, she does have one person hired and ready to go. So I would, if we're going to make, I realize we have to make some cuts, but I would prefer just maybe cutting one of those and keeping at least one crisis worker. That'd give us an opportunity to see how this program works with my patrol division, and we can maybe get a year of this to see what kind of results we get from this position. And we also talked about the sergeant, the detective. The plan with that was to have, oh, we got questions, I'll stop.
Counselor Ray?
Thanks. Ken, so I think I know the answer to this already, but can you talk about why it would be a contracted out position rather than developing our own situation for those crisis workers?
Yep, because this person would be a Tri County employee, and they would be responsible for their insurance, for their fringe benefits, for all the training. And that person would then ride along with the officers. We had a position similar to this back in the early 2000s. And we had funding from the state that funded that crisis worker. So there'd be, I guess the best word is embedded with the officers, but it would be contractual. So it wouldn't be an employee of the city, and it's actually, it saves us money by doing this this way.
And how many hours would we get, I guess?
That would be 40 hours a week. That would be full time. This person's only job would be responding with the officers, going to calls, dealing with folks with mental health issues, with homeless. We do have the options program, which I've talked about at prior City Council meeting. And that person is Andrew Skongen County. That's on a state grant. And Dave Billado is also a Tri County worker, and he has to respond to folks with substance use disorder, but not just in Lewiston and all of Anderson County. So this would be a solely Lewiston-based program.
Okay, and then in the 40 hours a week, were you suggesting to, so you could cover two of your shifts? Or were you suggesting to for another reason?
I was suggesting to, so we would have coverage, you know, almost around the clock if we could. One would maybe work, you know, a partial shift days and tonight's the nights into our third shift, which would be after 11:00. But I realize the realities of what our budget is looking like. So I would, if we, I'd like to get at least one, and then that way we can move forward with this program. And if it's successful, which I anticipate it will be, next year I may be coming to you to say, I want to get a second crisis worker.
Director Hunter, can we put both in the parking lot and have further discussion? Thanks.
Counselor Cleve?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of my questions were answered, or most of them at least. But I remember, like, back, like, early months, you did come with us, like, there was a state funding of two folks working for the entire Anderson County. Is that over? That Steve was going to pay for that position?
That is the options program. So what was happening before? We had a worker from Tri County who was working 10 hours with my offices, and he was responding to mental health, substance use disorder, overdose calls, maybe not at the time, but doing follow-up. So what's happened now is the state is funding that now 40-hours position, and that's called the options program. So that same worker, Dave Billado, is doing 40-hours, but he's Lewiston, Auburn, and all of the towns in Anderson County. Now, unfortunately, the majority of his time is spent in Lewiston due to the number of overdoses that we have. So that is now a full-time position. So Dave has an office in our Community Resource Office over on Bates Street. I gave him some office space there. So he's with my Community Resource Team. This would be a separate crisis, because Dave has to focus on substance use disorder. He can't focus on mental health or homeless. This person would be able to work with those folks who have those issues and get them referrals and get them hopefully off the street or get them main care, get them counseling or assistance that they need.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm able to bring back something from the parking lot, but this is definitely something that I would support, because there's, and also like two positions, one that would focus on, like, substance use, and one that would focus on mental health. And it can be like 40 hours a week, but thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, don't infer anything from what I'm going to ask you at all, but if you had to choose between the crisis workers and the promotions, give me your priority.
I was going to go into that. I had a discussion, I think, last time I met with you folks. I'm down, as of today, 13 officers. So the reality is, I could not make those promotions until I filled those positions. That sergeant promotion would be to be in charge of my selective enforcement team. And my detective would be because of the number of cases we have that involve computers, laptops, cell phones. I have one detective that is basically focusing on just gathering that information. So in reality, I would be hard-pressed to do it maybe before June of next year. I'd like to have it, at least have that leeway if I could get these positions filled. I can tell you, I have three people in the Police Academy right now. They've started remotely. And then they'll be going to the Academy the first week of April. I did hire two more, and I'm going to have another two that are going to be starting April 7th. And my hope is to get two more for the August Academy. So my hope is that this will start ramping up. But the issue is, they go to the Academy for four months, and then they're on a three-month field training officer program. So reality, they don't do me any good on the streets until seven months from when they, after the Academy. So that being said, my hope is next summer, I have all the bodies and I have these positions filled. If I don't have any more folks leave, I think I'm going to have one more sergeant retiring at the end of the summer. But I wouldn't be able to make those, Counsel Clement, that promotion, because I don't have the bodies to make them right now, that I can't just take them out of the patrol division.
I think when you last met with us, you indicated you had, you were down 12, you're down at 13 now. You just had one leave. I just found out about today. I was shocked to hear why.
Yes, he's, I have an officer that's leaving to go work for the Sheriff's Department in York, and then I have another officer that's going active-duty military. So those are the two reasons.
He's actually, what was portrayed to me, he's making out better by going to the military than staying here. So, yeah, that was a shock. Wasn't like that back in my day. I think it was $79 a month is what you made back then, but that was right after the Civil War, so.
All right, Chief, if you can go back to your presentation.
Okay, so I'd like to keep that, I think, the crisis worker. I'd like to keep at least one of those if I could. And then talking about the sergeant promotion, the detective promotion. I think maybe Heather could figure out these numbers, but I really don't think I could make those promotions until maybe next spring, depending on the number of people, you know, as long as they make it through the Academy and off the field training officer program. The detective position, I think, is only about $6,000. Heather, is that correct?
A little bit more with fringe.
Right, and I think the issue is, we just have every case that the detectives get, it has some sort of electronic evidence to it. So I have one detective who is trained and specialized in that, so he has to help every case. And then that limits the officers that can be involved in, I mean, excuse me, the detectives that can be involved in the investigations. Unfortunately, as the warmer weather comes, we need to have more detectives based on some of the incidents that have been occurring here in Lewiston. So, I mean, we might be able to lessen that effect of those two, and I may not even be able to make those promotions. But if I could keep those in there with the understanding that I'm not going to make them unless I have the bodies, that would be ideal.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally would like to see you get the two crisis workers and hold off on the promotions until we get the bodies, if that would be acceptable. I think we've gained more, perhaps, out of two crisis workers, given the types of problems that I see, adject to the department. But that's just my personal feeling. I'd like to keep those two positions in there, and maybe waylay the two promotions. And I would think that if you were able to make those next spring, for the money that's involved, we might be able to come up with that somewhere in the operating budget.
Would that be... So are you asking for that to be put in the parking lot for further discussion?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I have no problem. I'd like the two crisis workers. I'm just trying to, you know, after I was in the audience for Monday night's meeting, and I just trying to look any way that I can assist the city in meeting the goals of a low tax rate.
All set, Chief?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Chief, for jumping in on there. Looking at the Police Department, that starts on page 51. The overall increase with the Police Department is $386,156 or 5.5%. The increase is pretty much centered around two areas. One is personnel, the other one is the full annualization of the body cam maintenance and licensing agreement. But having said that, looking at Police Administration on page 51, that had an increase of $20,163 or 3.8%. 14 of that was in personal services. There was a $7,000 increase in contractual, which includes the civil service exams for $3,200, because it is a testing year, as well as $3,852 increase in the telephone line item for the cost of air cards and assuming a full complement of patrol officers, and then cellphone stipends associated with those positions, as well as the hotspot connectivity for the drone. Those are the three elements that are impacting the telephone line item. We had small decreases in both the fixed cost as well as the supply line items in administration. Counselor Cleve?
How often is the drone used? Has that been?
The officers and the detectives who are assigned to it are still in training. We actually did use it for, we were out in Auburn for the water department. They had to have something flying. We were using it as training. We haven't had to have it in actual criminal investigations at this point. You know, we haven't had any lost persons, anyone in the water. My hope is, we don't have to have it for that. So right now, we're still in the training session for it, because they have to maintain so many hours up, and they're just learning how to use everything that we got. Because we did get in the budget, but it didn't come in right away. So it's still, we haven't even had it a year yet, so they're still in the training process of it.
Moving on to the criminal investigation, that is at the bottom of page 51 and continues to page 52. That division had an overall increase of just under $17,000 or 1.2%. Of that $17,000, $15,000 was in personal services, including $12,300 in regular wages and about $2,600 increase in overtime. Contractual service also rose about $1,052. That was all in repairs to vehicles based upon projected costs. Supplies also rose by about $1,000 as well, and that was split between department apparel for the vendor contract and other supplies based upon utilizations and then needs for the computer forensic supplies that the chief indicated was becoming more prevalent. The patrol division is found on page 52. I'm sorry, Counselor Ray?
I was slow on the draw, sorry about that. Dues seem up quite a bit. Is there a new organization that we're paying dues to, or is there something going on there?
Actually, the the drone insurance is what was driving the increase in the fixed cost. And then they had a decrease in criminal investigations dues.
I'm seeing it was 560 last year, and it's 830 this year.
In which division are you looking at?
Criminal investigations.
And we have to, every, I think it's every two years, Counselor Ray, my polygraph examiners have to re-up their certification. So it's like, it's a two-year license, so that adds to it. So it's kind of like the testing where we do it every other year. So you'll see that some years it'll be zero, and it goes up a little bit. And I have two polygraph examiners, so that's why you have that increase, I think, of about...
It's like 200, but it looked like a large percentage was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, if you look at, yeah, but if you look at the actual dollar amount, it's not, I mean, it's higher, but it's 200 and something dollars.
Again, moving on to patrol on page 52. That division had an overall increase of $191,426 or 4.5%. Of that amount, $176,424 was found in personal services, including the increase in regular wages of just under $160,000. And that's based upon the reinstatement of two patrol officers that were frozen this year, as well as a $17,000 increase in overtime based upon salary adjustments and demand. Contractual services rose by $2,400. Of that $2,100 represents the increase in repairs to vehicles due to actual cost incurred. Supplies rose by $12,636. Of that amount, $12,586 was attributed to increases in the price of gasoline. And that's based upon the new lock-in price. We had a small increase in tires of $950 due to increase in repairs and the need for motorcycle tires. And that was tempered by the decrease in other supplies or K-9 expenses in the amount of $754. The contractual, I'm sorry, the capital outlay request typically, the patrol account is the division that requests all of the vehicles for the department. In the fund balance sheet that we talked about the first workshop night, you will see listed on there for the Police Department, three cruisers, two program cars, a mid-size SUV, and a full-size SUV, some siren and light control boxes, three prison transport seats, and a cargo box.
Could the chief talk just a little bit about the vehicle purchases and any critical needs versus things that might be able to be pushed out for a year?
Well, we need to replace the cruisers. And what we usually do is, with the cruisers, we take off the lettering, we take off the cage and things like that that are inside it, then we rotate that into the detective division. So then the detectives will drive those cars around. You know, some of these vehicles, I have some of the mileage, and this was back in December when this was prepared. Obviously, it's gone up from then, but a couple of that were trading in are 117,000, 111,000. And everybody has to remember that these are vehicles that are driven 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it's not like it's on the highway, it's in-town driving. And oftentimes, it's, you know, it's not easy driving in town. If we were going to get not, we did this last year, we only did one sedan. And so I put back in two, because that's what we've done in the past. If we took one of those out, that might be a possibility, that we could then just keep one of the cars that we were willing to trade in. I'd have to see which one has the least amount of mileage, it's what's the best out of the worst, I guess, is the way to put that. But we need to replace these vehicles, because just of the use that we get. And we try to do this every year, and I know a number of years ago, back, well, it was 2008, that we didn't do that, and we were playing catch-up for a couple of years. And we don't want to do that, because these vehicles just take such a beating from their constant use.
And what are the program cars?
Those will then, because some of the cars are in such bad shape, those will then go into the detective division. So we don't buy new cars, but we buy program cars. Like, we got a program car last year. I actually got that one. And then we kind of moved them down, because I don't drive, you know, I drive to and from work, it's pretty much what I do. So then we'll use that car, we'll then go down to the detective, so they last longer. So that's what we try to do with the program cars. And the problem is too, is trying to find the program cars. This past year, we had a difficult time due to COVID. And we actually just got our cruisers in for last year, that are swapping over. Because of COVID, everything was delayed.
All right, Heather, could you put one SUV on the list? I know everybody keeps calling it parking lot. The old-school stuff was, it was...
Were we talking the sedans, the program sedans, or the SUV?
The SUV. You said you bought one SUV last year.
Sedan.
Oh, sedan. All right, yeah.
And that's the program car is the sedan.
Okay.
If you say the SUV, you're taking away a cruiser, and that's going to be a whole different conversation.
No, I don't want to do that, so thank you. All set, Heather?
Thank you. The Support Service Division is the next division that you'll see on the bottom of page 52, continuing on to page 53. That had an overall increase of $147,700 or 28.9 or 8%. Personal Services made up $30,748 of that. The lion's share of the increase was in contractual services, $116,474. And that's the increase in maintenance and licensing due to the body cameras. So you will see that, I mean, there was a minor $500 adjustment, but...
That body camera is, what, almost $120,000 added to that line? That wasn't there last year.
Yes. We had a small increase of supplies of $200, and that's part of a collective bargaining agreement for the fleet manager's apparel. And fixed charges were flat there. The Police Building increased by just under $6,000 or 4.9%. We had a $960 increase in wages charged from public works for police station maintenance. We had contractual services that rose by $5,000. And repairs to buildings represented $6,500 of the increase. That is for a combination of the parking lot pavement and some other repairs to the buildings, and that was netted against a reduction in utilities of just under $1,500. Counselor Ray?
So I see here, under repairs to building, the requested was, was what, 7,000 more than what was recommended? Could either Director Hunter or the chief speak to if that reduction is going to really handicap that budget?
The fence, the fence was moved to the fund balance.
Oh, okay. Yep. So it's still being funded, repairs to buildings are being funded fully, just differently?
As it stands, yes.
Okay.
And it is a possibility, and it's one of the things that I've kind of had earmarked for the general discussions, we may be able to move the parking lot pavement to fund balance as well, based upon the infrequency of that. The Animal Control Officer, it budget is found on page 53. That had an overall increase of $3,900 or 3.9%. That was all in wages. And then a small decrease, excuse me, increase in supplies for gas. The Drug Enforcement Fund is found on page 54. And just as a reminder to the council, that is no tax-based money. Money is derived from a prorated share of drug cases involving local police services with regards to those cases. There's very specific criteria on what expenses can be converted over and funded through these revenue sources. It is assuming that revenues are very conservative, because we don't know when we're going to receive the forfeitures. And at this point in this budget, we are assuming flat revenue projections. I would let you know that at the estimated fund balance at the beginning of FY '21 is $225,237. This fund does not have any personal services charged there. Contractual services rose by $26,000. It was mitigated by decreases in the utilities. And that was not needed because of the relocation to 85 Park Street. The 85 Park Street City Building picks up the utilities for that particular location. We did have an increase in in-service training. It's a combination of $22,000 for new officers, detective training, sending somebody to the FBI. We also had an increase in miscellaneous services of $7,800. A lot of the drone training and supplies needed for that is being funded through the drug forfeiture account. And then we did allocate, I think it ended up being about $3,000 of the body cams, maintenance, and licensing to drug forfeiture. Supplies rose by about $9,700. Again, we had a decrease in other supplies of $1,900. Last year, or actually this fiscal year, we spent that on furniture and fixtures needed to operate and set up the new task force building on 85 Park Street. That was offset by increase in public safety supplies of about $20,000, $28,000. That is gear for new officers, taser replacements, and range supplies. And then the capital outlay that you see noted there, $37,000 for the current year and operations. That was for the actual body camera acquisition that council approved to move forward in the current fiscal year. So that's all I have for the Police Department, unless anybody has any lingering questions. If not, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank the chief. Is he going to be stepping out at this point? Yeah, thank you, chief. Appreciate your work on your budget.
Thanks, Ethan. So we'll move on to the Fire Department. I'm going to wait till Brian gets in here this time. So he did have one new program and service request, and that was for an Assistant Chief. Chief Stockdale, I was mentioning the new program and service request related to the Assistant Fire Chief. I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that briefly before we moved on to the fluctuations in your budget?
Certainly. So there's not much change since the last two years. We tried to move this process forward. One of our big issues is that just the span of control and the ability to effectively manage a large group is, it creates a lot of issues for us in the terms of rolling out inspections and who's doing what within the department. This is certainly part of a larger departmental strategic plan to increase our efficiency and to better manage the resources that we already do have. So, you know, the need for this is certainly without question to me. You know, but I certainly understand where we are, so. That's all I have for that.
Counselor Joy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I noticed that you're looking for another assistant chief. When I first came on, I had an assistant chief, but I had deputy chiefs as well that took care of the floor area. So would it be possible to get a, or the position be a deputy chief at a lower wage or would that create a problem with getting somebody from the floor to come up and work at that wage group?
I, I don't think that would be necessarily an issue whatsoever. I, I think the position's going to be the same, by the way, semantics at this point, you know, so we would just adjust some duties a bit, but I would certainly think the only reason why it was an assistant chief is because it wouldn't be assigned to a shift. It would be an eight to five position. That would pretty much be in control of the training system. A lot of the operational pieces that it's very difficult for just two of us to manage at this point. So it would be more of a direct contact as a deputy chief. I have to remember, so where I came from, deputy chief was actually the second in charge. So it's to me, they're, it's, they're interchangeable, it's just how are you using them? But certainly I would think you know, with the function, you, you would be absolutely correct and, and you know, how that would be used.
Thanks for the explanation. I appreciate it.
Counselor Cleve?
Chief, can you explain to me, so the, you know, the responsibilities and tasks that you're requesting from this position, who currently does, you know, does those?
Well, it's, so who currently does them is anybody we can get to do them is really what we do, which is why it's very difficult. With two of us in management with seventy line employees or seventy-eight other line employees makes it very difficult to manage our span of control and to get a lot of the things we need done accomplished. So for example, I would be talking a, a training system. It's very difficult to make sure everybody meets all training requirements, state mandated requirements, safety requirements, operational requirements. You know, when there's only two of us who are really trying to work on inspections, prevention and myself working on, you know, the, the department head functions. This position's real main force would be to look at more of an operational piece where somebody controlling the day-to-day operations, the go-to person where the assistant chief and I would spend a lot less time being bogged down in the weeds of say, particular smaller operations where this individual could, could take care of a lot of those and making sure the tracking, the paperwork, the the endless onslaught of OSHA regulations to make sure that that's managed appropriately. That's why it's that important for us.
I'm, I'm wondering, how about like an office assistant or like administrative assistant? Do they need like a certain skills or certificates?
Correct. This, this person would need to be a fire service or administrator, medical training, have experience in training, training, delivery, program development, management, job performance requirement evaluations, as well as be very up to date in what's actually going on in fire service management itself.
Thank you. Heather, I would like to move that to the parking lot.
Hey, Counselor, right? And Heather, I'll pass it back over to you to call on people. I just wasn't sure if you saw Counsel LaJoy, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Awesome. So I think I have two questions. So the first is does, so you mentioned asking for this position for the past two years. Would this align with the recommendations that came forward from the fire study?
It would, and this is a part of our, our longer-term strategic plan where a lot of, many of the things that we want to accomplish down the road, there's just, you know, we, we wouldn't efficiently, efficiently enough be able to accomplish those with just two of us as the management to do this. And so it certainly fits in with our longer-term some study recommendations and how we would manage those recommendations and whatever we implement.
Okay. And then in the new program or service description, I was just pulling that up and it references that the two current management staff are trying to manage a workload that was previously done by a staff of seven. When it was a staff of seven, how many line people did you have then? Did the department have that?
I believe in, in Counselor LaJoy could say that, but more than we have now at times. The way it was set up before was there was, and correct me if I'm a little off, Counselor Joy, if this may be the case, but the fire chief, the assistant chief, there was a battalion chief as well, as well as four deputy chiefs. The deputy chiefs were all assigned to a shift and they were the on-duty commander for that piece, that the battalion chief was the training officer since that was such an important piece. And then the assistant chief and the chief to, to manage the higher level functions.
Okay, I think.
All of those same, do general same duties. Some of those duties were, when, when those positions were done away with, were given to the captain position.
Yeah.
But more of the slight operational position, but not the management of the necessarily higher function level that, that needs to be at this point.
Okay. And so, sorry, always leading me to other questions. So a captain is not a management position?
Correct. That, that is, well, they are a manager. They, they are a man, they are shift, you know, the, the company captain or the, the shift captain. But it's all in one union position. They're not a management, they're not, it's all they're all kind of on the, they're all line, but they have different functions within that line.
Okay.
So it would be a mid, I guess, in, in reality, it's a mid-level manager, right?
Okay, thanks, chief.
But it's not classified as a management position.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, ma'am. Chief, I came from the same thing. The deputy chief was the number two guy. I held that position for five years in Augusta. I see the need, I've read the study. I'd like to see if we approach this from the parking lot, if we could do something in the way of a lesser position, something that we might be able to elevate. I, I do recognize the need for it, but I also recognize where we're headed this year and it's a, it's a very dark place at the moment. So if we can come up with something that would address the needs at a lesser cost, then I certainly could go along with that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would think that there's certainly multiple iterations of this. So I mean, there's certainly room, room for us to make adjustments and, you know, what our expectations would be. So I think that's something we could certainly look for.
Thank you.
Counselor LaJoy?
Yes, thank you. Getting back to the explanation, chief, you're correct. The thing was, when I first came on, I had an assistant chief and four deputy chiefs. And the way that worked was because of the K day. The deputy chief, of course, would work that day, the K day person. But they were all on salary, which made a bigger difference in my book than it did with regards as to hourly wages that we pay the chiefs, the captains' positions. The captains took on a responsibility, however, they also had the floor supervision as well, and the deputies had the same thing. I, I, I believe, I truly believe that the system worked better the way it was previously than it does now. Both monetary-wise and possibly how can I say, officer-wise, if you will, because there was a definite person in charge, which was the deputy chief at the time. So that's just my opinion, but you're right in your explanation. Thank you.
So if there are no more questions on the new program and service, I can move on to the fire budget. That begins on page fifty-five. The first division is the administrative office that has an increase of about seventy-one hundred dollars or three, two point three percent. Based upon attrition and the one of the positions taking advantage of the retiree hire program, personal services actually decreased by five hundred dollars. Contractual services rose by nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Seven thousand of that, a little over seven thousand of that was in maintenance and licensing for the mobile data terminals as well as replacing the paging software and the paging and messaging, messaging software for a new software program. Telephone rose by twenty-one, twenty-two hundred dollars based upon usage as well as bringing back the unfrozen inspector's position that had a cell phone stipend attached to it. And then a small increase of six hundred dollars in repairs to vehicles. Supplies decreased by twenty-one hundred dollars. We had offsetting adjustments there where increase in individual and department apparel impacted the, by the new chief, deputy chief last year. So we didn't have those repeat costs in the current year budget. And the firefighting budget, which falls on the bottom of the page fifty-five, continues to page fifty-six. We have an overall increase here of seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars or twelve point seven percent. Personal services rose by four hundred and sixty thousand, two seventy-seven. Of that amount, about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars represents regular salaries. And then there was an eighty-six thousand dollar increase in overtime based upon actual cost incurred. Contractual services rose by ten thousand, seven hundred dollars. We had an increase in medical services of twenty-six hundred dollars. There was an increase of fifty-eight dollars per TB test and all of the employees have to go through that as well as an increase in repairs to vehicles of thirty-five hundred based upon anticipated repairs particularly for engine three, five and seven. Repairs to equipment rose by thirty-eight, thirty-one hundred dollars for air pack repairs. And then there was an increase of sixteen hundred dollars for in-service training for officers, the biennial captain and lieutenant testing. Supplies rose by fifty-five hundred dollars. I'm sorry, Counselor Cleve?
Thank you. So under public safety equipment, I see that they requested twenty-nine thousand and four hundred and twenty, but there's nothing under recommendation. Am I just missing something or?
I think a lot of that ended up going to fund balance. And let me double check. Yes, so there's a difference of about four thousand dollars there and that was moved to some fund balance items.
Thank you.
If I could, I'd just like, so we recently added a company of men, and that's probably the wrong terminology, right? In the last few years, we added three or four firefighters, chief?
That is correct. Contractually, we went on the ladder truck from three firefighters to four firefighters.
What year did that happen in?
I believe that was, well, it must have been seventeen, I believe.
Oh, was it that long ago?
Correct. Yeah, because it was just when I, when I came on board, I believe. It was the contract just before or that ended as I came on board, so.
And was there any reduction in, in overtime because of that move?
Negative. We're, we're, that would just, that was just part of the increase in minimum manning that's contractual for minimum staffing. We only have two replacement firefighters that are used for long-term injuries. So any of the other sick time or any time off is all, will always be overtime. Contractually, there's just no way to, to not do that because of the contracted minimum staffing requirements.
All right. So I said this every year as a counselor for six years, that any department that's spending nearly a million dollars and, and overtime is concerning to me and I think I've heard from others that it's concerning within the community. So just sharing that, I recognize I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that there's anything that can be done to address it. So, thank you.
So moving on to supplies within the fire department or the firefighting division, we had an increase of fifty-five hundred dollars there. Of that amount, almost fifty-nine hundred dollars were, represents increase in tires. Ladder one needs both front and rear tires. That's the total of ten new tires, which is driving the cost of that budget up. Public safety supplies had a small increase of thirty-two hundred. Again, that's purchasing the normal supplies based upon wear and tear of hose, foam, harmesses and so forth. And a lot of that was cut from the FY twenty-one budget as we were trying to do curtailment efforts within the current year budget. We had a net increase, excuse me, decrease in apparel of three thousand dollars. And that was cutting the spare turnout gear. As you might recall, we were able to fund spare turnout gear through the Keep Main Healthy Grant. So that provided us some monetary budget savings within the FY twenty-two budget. Fixed charges here rose by two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred dollars. That represents the twenty-three percent water rate increase and the calculation and impact on the, what's known as the hydrant rental, but it's also, it's really means to expand the water system to provide for fire suppression. So as we evaluate that rate increase, any reductions to that will definitely impact this budgetary line item. I would also keep in mind that the rate increase is phased in. So the first quarter will not necessarily count. It would be at the old rate because of the look back. So actually an FY twenty-three, we would feel the full impact of that rate increase on this particular line item. Fire communication falls on page fifty-six. We had a six thousand dollar increase there at eight point six. That is all in personal services. We had minor offsetting increases and decreases in contractual and supplies in the nature of about two to three hundred dollars. Fire prevention had an overall increase of sixty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars or forty-one point four percent. That is unfreezing the new fire inspector, specter's position. That all landed in the personnel services account of sixty-four thousand, six forty-one.
Has that been filled?
No, it's, it was a frozen position.
I'd like to have it in the parking lot or on the list, please. Thank you.
And we had a slight increase in printing of about three hundred dollars and a six hundred dollar increase in supplies, which represents that position's apparel. And then a small thirty dollar increase in fixed charges for dues for that position as well. Counselor Rick?
Thank you. So you said earlier that there, the cell stipend for that unfrozen position is up in the administrative line, is that right? Could you tell us what the total for that position that the mayor just put on the list is?
Yep. Let me look at last year's. It's in the neighborhood of probably, including fringe benefits, probably in the neighborhood of eighty to ninety-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Fire stations found on page fifty-seven. That had an overall increase of sixteen thousand dollars or eighteen point three percent. The lion's share of that increase was found in contractual services of fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Utilities, the increase in utilities makes up nine thousand dollars of that increase. Of fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars utilities, the increase in utilities makes up nine thousand dollars of that increase. As we're transitioning to the new fire station, there is going to be some redundancy in utilities. Occurring until that station is fully operational and then we determine how to handle the former station. So fuel supplies also increased by nineteen hundred dollars. Again, that's all related to transitioning. To that new station. We did have an increase in repairs to buildings of four thousand dollars based upon the age of the other stations. And any minor tweaking the new station might need. Household supplies rose. And impacted the overall supply category of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. All of the capital for the fire stations. Was moved to fund balance allocation that includes their normal request for appliances, bed furniture and so forth. As well as conversion of LED lighting in central station and the floor replacement at central station. There are no other questions for the fire department. We can move on to nine one one.
Thank you, chief, for your work on the budget.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Have a great night.
A lot of fire chiefs in the room tonight. I mean, and I think it goes in order too with joy, with flair.
So the nine one one budget is a separate document approved by the committee. You received that in email. The nine one one director, Paula Claire, also furnished you a memo outlining the changes within the nine one one budget. You will see it comes under our budget on page seventy six, looking at the joint agencies. The nine one one center and the associated budget rose by twenty seven thousand, thirty eight dollars or two point four percent. We had an increase in personal services of sixty eight thousand, seven hundred dollars or three point one percent. That's based upon a full complement of employees and you have. The regular wages rising by about fifty thousand, six hundred dollars and then a small. Increase in overtime of about eighteen hundred dollars. Similar to general fund and similar to what we saw in the utility funds. We had some experience with increases in fringe benefits of thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Again, with increase in salaries, the FICA Medicare portion of fringe benefits will increase as well as. The main state retirement, the changes in the employer's share of that also rose. Contractual services rose by twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty three dollars or fourteen percent. We had increases in utilities of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Again, attributed to not only power adjustments by CMP but related to the new radio project. We had a mileage increase of four thousand dollars. That is where they budget for their. Kalia accreditation and this is an on-year for that review. Maintenance and licensing rose by thirty six thousand dollars based upon a backup server support agreement. The good news is we had a decrease in the telephone lines and in this particular case, nine one one has a significant. Telephone bill, so when we talk about a twenty four thousand dollar decrease. That is significantly helping offset those other increases and that is all attributed to the new radio project. And decreasing phone lines into the center. And we had a small decrease of thirty four hundred dollars in training. Supplies remain flat this year. We had a small increase in fixed charges of six hundred and twenty one dollars. In insurance. Debt service based upon the magnitude of the radio project. It was agreed by both city administrations at the time that each municipality would hold. The radio project debt directly on each municipality rather than funneling it through the nine one one operation center. There was a two thousand, six hundred dollar decrease in capital outlay. Based upon needed communication equipment. The nine one one committee does have other non municipal or I should say non Lewiston Auburn. Contributing revenue that rose by three thousand, thirty six thousand dollars and a thirty six, almost thirty seven thousand dollars. That is made up of the support with the town of Poland. We have a small increase in tower rental revenue, but the lion's share of this falls into the fund balance. Carry forward. In the current year budget, we had about thirty six thousand dollars that was brought forward to balance the FY twenty one budget. The nine one one committee is looking at using seventy five thousand dollars to balance the FY twenty two budget. We do have a fund balance policy. This is well within the policy limitations. Utilizing this amount of money reduces the fund balance coverage to seven point eight five percent. And I don't know if the nine one one director would like to. Say a few words on any of this or?
Well, just thank you for the opportunity to present our budget. We have a hard working group of dispatchers and admin staff. We are, as Heather mentioned, we're, our radio project is ongoing. Covid has set us back like other agencies, but I believe that over the past few months, the work that we've been doing with the vendor. Has put us very much on track. In short, where we are with the project is we are in the voice quality and radio signal strength testing and that's something that we're doing in-house. To ensure that we can present to the committee and to the chiefs who'll be using the system that we're satisfied with the performance. Our budget overall is two point two percent. We've worked hard over the previous years. You know, to hold spending down. We've met our budget each year that I've been the director. And again, we're focusing on our expenditure rate of roughly ninety seven, ninety eight percent to. Bring forward a small fund balance for the following year. So again, thank you and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Counselor Rick? Thank you and thank you to the director of nine one one. I started. You know, feeling my chest tighten when I saw some of the increases, but then seeing the correlating decreases to try to keep things as fly as possible is helpful. Can we just have a refresher from Director Hunter about how joint budgets get passed? If the city of Auburn doesn't match what we're doing, what, who, who goes first, I guess, is the question. And how does it proceed from there? Because this is our first joint budget of this year.
Traditionally, Lewiston tends to adopt their budget a little bit before Auburn. Auburn, my understanding, has moved up their schedule to better coincide with our budget process and schedule. The finance director, Jill Eastman, for the city of Auburn and I keeping close to communication as we're. Teeing up to the actual budget appropriation to make sure everything's still in sync, not only with the operating budget, but also with the capital. LCIP request as well. So that is a constant monitoring between the two of us. Any other questions on nine one one? Thank you, Paul.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Now we're flipping back to page thirty nine. And to talk about the tax increment financing fund. So as a reminder, similar to the drug forfeiture fund, this is a non-tax impacted. Our direct general fund tax impacted fund. It is currently. Supplied and furnished funding by the fifty percent of the Walmart personal property TIF. Which is running about three, three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars a year. We are now also capturing about twenty four thousand dollars. From the Argo TIF, the personal property TIF that also assists with the economic development budget. Based upon costs and trying to control the particular revenue stream here. It was made, a decision was made back in FY nineteen to not charge the lump sum. Salary or fringe benefits to the salaries that are being charged here. So. The lump sum which includes health insurance and so forth is remaining on general fund. The direct percentage based fringe benefits. Are charged to this fund and it just helps the sustainability of this fund. So revenues in this particular fund are contingent upon the final budget adoption and what the approved tax rate is. We are projecting personal services to increase by fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. That includes not only the COLAs and steps for those salaries involved. To the tune of ninety seven hundred dollars, but it's also. Based upon increases to main state retirement and then the FICA Medicare social security. Component and that rose by a total of about. Seventy six hundred dollars from that standpoint. We had a decrease in contractual service of three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. That is all in mileage and travel of two thousand dollars, given that there are no. Out of state traveling to conferences and so forth. And also a fifteen hundred dollar decrease in miscellaneous services based upon the reduction of Top Gun funding. Supplies remain flat. The fixed charges here rose by twenty four thousand dollars. All debt service related to the TIF projects are budgeted here, so that's why you'll see. Principal and interest, you will also see what's known as credit enhancements. That's the reimbursement based upon their. TIF agreement of real estate and personal property taxes back to the property owner. In this particular case, we had an increase here of about fifty thousand dollars. Due to not only the anticipated tax rate adjustment, but we had two new TIFs come online. In FY twenty two and that includes Valley Beverage as well as the, is it the Scruton Block? Am I pronouncing that right, Lincoln? Okay. And again, those will be adjusted based upon the final tax rate when we get there. One joint agency, if you will, counselor, right?
Um, yes, Valley Beverage. I was out there a couple of weeks ago and. They aren't starting that project for a bit and so I'm just wondering how. That timing with them actually moving forward with that expenditure relates to the TIF term. Does that make sense?
Yes, Lincoln, do you know the timeline of that TIF?
Typically, our TIFs have been getting structured where it will be, and I honestly, Misty and Heidi were the ones who led the charge on that one, but. The typical model we've been following recently is if it's a fifteen year TIF, the TIF term will be seventeen years, the first two years. It's not triggered. It's only one that in that third year when they're at full value is when it kicks in.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And it only kicks in when there's captured assessed value realized.
Yes, exactly. It's once there's a project. On that note, there's the Saxon TIF got approved earlier this year, or actually about two years ago at this point. That's one that will be coming to you for an amendment. For when the trigger date starts. That's something you'll see in a couple of months, but that's, I think that addresses counselor Ray's concern.
Okay, thank you, Lincoln. There is a joint agency, if you will, that is funded from the TIF budget and that is LA Arts. They have requested their annual thirty thousand dollars. That has been flat funded. A flat funded request for a number of years now, probably close to five years. As you might know, the funding helps with the art walk and it. Funds administrative costs that allow them to leverage those dollars in order to attract various. Federal endowment funds to offer various programming. Counselor, right?
Thank you. So you just, something you said sparked me. You said a pseudo joint. Adventure, not adventure here, but. Yes, agency, thank you. I'm having trouble with the right words. We fund that for thirty thousand a year. How much does Auburn fund it?
Auburn funds it directly based upon programs that they want to offer within their community.
So not so joint.
It's, it's, it may equal the same dollar amount, but there are. Activity base versus ours is more administrative based.
So quickly, I'd just like to add the value we get for that thirty thousand dollars and the connection to artists that LA. Arts creates. You know, I'm hoping at some point we can even identify more funding because I just think that's a big part of our economic development plan.
So in reviewing their budget and again, that was shared with the city council as well and I think that was in the same email as the. Nine one one information. They are projecting an increase in revenues. It's kind of switching categories, but the overall. Revenue budget line item is increasing by two thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. They're using foundation, foundation source revenue that is offsetting other revenue decreases. Recognizing that they're still unclear on how covid will impact them and the upcoming budget. Expenses, the overall expenses rose by just under thirty five hundred dollars. And that was a netting of an increase in employer cost of ten thousand dollars. And that was offset by program production costs of about seventy five hundred dollars. All the other line items were generally. Expenditure neutral.
And Heather, you said the TIF account funds LA, that LA Arts, where is that and what number is it tied to?
If you look down in donations on page thirty nine.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor, right?
Mr. Mayor, you sparked me to make this suggestion, but I'd like to possibly look at if they need an increase in that funding. And put that on the list for further discussion. I don't see, I don't think Jim's here right now, but I would just be curious. Yeah, to know if there's needs that aren't being met. I think to the mayor's point, like. All of the art that has cropped up recently, or at least in my two terms on council has been incredible and I'd like to keep. Lewiston the focus of that, given the rich resources we have here, so. I'd be interested in having a conversation about what the level of need might be.
I will share with you all the joint agencies met with administration on both sides of the river. During that time period, I think he was very. Comfortable. Based upon the current model, if things start opening up and performances avail themselves. I think that's maybe when. There may be some fluctuations in the request, but I can definitely reach out to him and keep that on the list.
Yeah, just thinking about what we're about to enter when things go normalish, I think. There's going to be a real need and want for more public art in our outdoor spaces as people are getting outdoors more and interacting more, so. Just want to check in for this summer and into the beginning of next summer.
Perfect.
And can I just add a little bit more? So e- even if we can identify ways to make art walk even better with live music and stuff, so. You know, if they could maybe price all that and just to confirm, so this wouldn't affect property taxpayers directly as long as we stay within. The available funds of this TIF, correct?
That's correct. But this TIF does not have the resources that. But this TIF does not have the resources that some of the other special revenue funds has. So we would have to, depending on what the request, the dollar value of the request made, we might have to evaluate that more and possibly explore some other funding options.
And I personally think it should be a conservative increase if the council would ever consider that. But at least it shows that we value what they bring to the table for our city. And again, that'll be a council decision as we get into the list of the parking lot. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the TIF fund? So with your permission, I will turn it over to Lincoln to review the CDBG budget.
Great, thanks. I think Heather, you were due to get a drink of water or something. You've been talking for a while. Nice job. This is sort of the beginning of the annual process, at least for the, for the council. Counselor Khalid is on the CDBG Citizen Advisory Committee, which is a group of, of six citizens that help, help really evaluate the various applications that agencies put in. And that's really the primary portion of the, of this evaluation. This year, we received eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars is our allocation to CDBG funds. That's down about two point four percent from what we received last year, which translates to about a twenty-two thousand dollar drop. The committee members, there's Pauline Goodis, who is the chair. Opdegar Nagay is the vice chair. Counselor Khalid, Ashlyn Medina, David Nielsen Jr. and Paul Robinson are the folks who really do the heavy lifting on this project and they really read about three inches of applications, talk to the agencies, ask questions, evaluate them, and then score them against some thirty-point scale. It's, you know, it's community need and benefit, which is worth up to ten points. Give us a project descriptness and evaluate the soundness of the approach of how they're trying to take on these challenges in the community, still organizational capacity and the financial feasibility. This year, we had fifteen agencies apply for funding, which all in was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. We're not allowed to spend that much, as much as all these agencies do wonderful work. HUD puts a fifteen percent cap on what we can put out to agencies. This year, that amount totaled a hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So we needed to really start shrinking how many agencies we could fund. Two agencies actually did not meet HUD criteria and we are looking to do technical assistance to help, help agencies that historically have not been able to access our funding. The regulatory process is significant and it's quite a burden, especially for younger startup agencies. So we're looking, as our capacity increases, to start providing technical assistance so we can sort of broaden the scope of those agencies as opposed to the typical agencies. It's been a pretty static list for the last few years. Over the last few years, we have funded thirteen agencies. The word came down from our HUD representative in Boston that we're really funding more agencies than we've got the capacity to adequately monitor. And really, we need to be, you know, going in, doing book review of their books, their policies. Our staff has been able to do it, but it's a struggle and it's a young staff that we have at this point, relatively new staff. So they're, they're learning the ropes as well. But even with experienced agencies, excuse me, experienced communities of the same size as Lewiston, our HUD rep says, Link, you guys are doing more than anybody else your size. You really need to drop that number. So this year, after that discussion with the Citizen Advisory Committee, the group came forward with recommending nine agencies for funding. Just to go through them quickly, they're in your book, but for those folks who are listening at home so they can have some sense who's getting funding. Seniors Plus is going to be getting twenty-five thousand dollars for their Meals on Wheels program. The Trinity Jubilee Center Food Pantry will get nine thousand dollars. Trinity's Day Shelter Program will get twenty-nine thousand. The Center for Wisdom's Women, which will help with Sophia's House Programming, is recommended to get nineteen thousand, two hundred in funding. Lewiston Adult Ed, which is doing a skills-based work readiness training program. They're recommended for twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty. New Beginnings, which provides educational support to homeless youth. That's eighteen thousand, four hundred. Promise Early Education, which is the Head Start Program locally, is recommended for nine thousand, two hundred dollars. Tree Street Youth, thirteen thousand, two hundred. And the YWCA to help with their school-aged childcare programs. This is really, instead of just daycare, it's for kids that are school-aged and need some sort of after-school support. They're recommended for thirteen thousand, two hundred. The agencies that scored at the top of the tier, you got a hundred percent of their RASK. The group that scored, the next two down were ninety-six percent of RASK, then ninety-two percent of RASK, and then eighty-eight percent of RASK. All in, we're recommending a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars be allocated to these agencies. That's two point nine percent below the cap. And we really want to stay below the maximum we could spend, just in case we don't get as many loan repayments as we expect. If we overspend, we have to pay it back out of Sydney taxpayer dollars. We're always very cautious not to exceed caps. I should note that these, as I sort of led with, these, these are tough choices. All of the agencies are worth funding. They all do good work. But we just have limited funding and limited staff capacity to monitor them. So those were the recommendations put forth by the Citizen Advisory Committee regarding agencies. Other projects look to be funded out of this allocation. How Street Sidewalks, we did the planning work over this, the year we're currently in. And we have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand recommended for funding to actually do the brick and mortar improvements to the How Street Sidewalk area. Code Enforcement, we're looking to fund another position, eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. It's, it's an ongoing expense. Ben Westman is, has been dedicated to really working in the streets, tree streets neighborhood, really in the target area and has done a great job improving the quality of the housing stock, dealing with issues. Counselor Ray, I'm seeing you've got a hand up.
Yeah, I, I feel like I ask this every year during this budget, but is there a question on the CDBG agency application about if they can still carry out the program that they intend to with the, with the eighty-eight percent or ninety-two percent of the funding? So for example, for the YW, if they receive two thousand dollars less than what they applied for, can they still execute?
It's a good question, specifically the way you phrased it, no, but we get their overall budget.
Okay.
And so we can see that we're a portion of it typically. And most often, they don't get the full funding they ask. So it's part of the negotiations once the council makes a decision on how much to fund. And I should point out, the Citizen Advisory Committee is just a recommending body to. They do a lot of homework, a lot of work to bring forth these recommendations, but the council is ultimately the decision makers on this. So whether you choose to accept their recommendations or want to adjust them, that's entirely in your purview.
Thank you.
You bet. So we've got code enforcement. We've got fifty thousand going to lead match. That's to help make improvements to building units that get lead grant funding. There's up to an eighteen thousand dollars per unit they can get. Owner of the building needs to put in fourteen hundred as an owner match and we're going to put in one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars per unit, which helps us meet our match requirements on the lead grant. It also helps make the project, just make it more comprehensive, take it beyond just lead. And then the one, we have a little bit of a wild card this year. Historically, when agencies have had trouble, a few years back, the YWCA had a roof that needed to be repaired and that probably happened in June. And they had to wait nine months before they could apply for funding because we typically have gone through just a one-year, a once-a-year funding cycle. For public facilities, based on that experience with public facilities, we're recommending that one hundred and forty thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars be set aside for agencies that have, that serve the public and that have issues arise like a bad roof or they, they, I know, Tree Street Youth, as I said, they've got some issues with their basement of water infiltration. So it's putting money aside that's available on a, when the need arises. So that's part of the recommendation. And then there are both CDBG administration, which is, you know, salaries and travel and training and, and marketing and public notices, all that stuff, and rehab administration. So those are the, the last pieces for the budget. And I can continue with home or I can just pause here if there are any questions specifically on CDBG.
I don't see anything.
Okay, I'll keep rolling. Home is, we're in a consortium with Auburn, the two cities. Neither city alone is large enough to qualify for home funding. It's another federal program administered by HUD. So we formed a consortium with Auburn. They are the lead on it. So they have the heavier administrative burden than we do. So out of the ten percent amount that you can use for administration, they get seven percent of it. We get three percent of it. Home is a very restrictive program. It really can only be used to support affordable housing, either the creation of it for people, you know, low, low to moderate income homeowners who need repairs. We can also use it for security deposits for people who are homeless or at risk of being homeless. And most often, what we've been using it for for the last several years has really been providing leveraged funds, helping to really cover the gaps in workforce housing projects. And this year, we're sort of staying with that same tune. Out of the consortium itself, we received four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars this year. Our, our share of that money is two hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. When you combine that amount with the unspent funds from prior allocations, we have eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars to allocate. Although some of that's already earmarked, there's three hundred and thirty thousand that is going to Avesta's project, which has been known as Blake and Klein, although they renamed it the Gavero Place in honor of a gentleman who was on the board of directors at Community Concepts. I believe, I know he was high in the food chain at the state. I think he was maybe in the Attorney General's office, but just a wonderful man who passed away very shortly after retirement. And I think it's just a wonderful honor. And somebody had actually reminded me that the site where that building is going to be built was actually where his family grew up or his father had a doctor's office, I believe. So it's just a, a great tribute to the man. And sorry, three hundred and thirty thousand and work has already started on that. That's, there's environmental work going on. The closing on that will happen early in April. So that money will start moving out. We also have allocated two hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars of home funds to help raise up with their project, which has grown from nine units to eighteen units. And then the last, well, there's also fifteen thousand that we're asking for to help with the security deposits, which things have been not as, as, as high a demand on that as we had expected. There were enough programs to help support people, keep them in their housing. But we fully expect as, as the pandemic goes and support starts shrinking, that we will likely see some of those needs. And we've certainly seen an increase in our homeless population as well. And then the last part of the recommendation is we've got a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars that we're recommending that it just be set aside for another workforce housing project, specifically one related to the Choice Neighborhood Plan. They had both the, there are two projects that are in the pipeline. If we get that funding, we had, the council had approved when we were going through the Choice Neighborhood Application Process, that we'd provide up to six, well, not up to, we would provide six hundred thousand dollars of home funds and to help develop either Site One or Site Two for the redevelopment. So we'd like to start chipping away and having that money set aside so it's available when the need arises. With that, I would again, open it up to questions and not sure how many people are watching tonight, but we're really trying to make as much of a public process out of this and get public input. If, if we're missing the mark on something, we ask that folks be able to weigh in as well.
Okay, that's, that's it. Heather, anything else? You're muted.
Counselor Ray, I'm all set, but Counselor Ray would have a question.
Sorry, Counselor Ray.
It's okay. It's a little small in the online packet. Can you tell us why we have a census tract map in here?
It's more just informational. The CDBG and home dollars are really targeted to those four census tracts, the downtown census tracts, which includes the area behind the hospital, running to the river, up to Bates College, over to East Avenue. And that's sort of the circumference of it.
Okay, but if folks have a question, they can just work with your office if they live just outside or are they in it?
Yeah, and really, that's where we target the dollars. If there is a low to moderate income homeowner, moderate is anybody at eighty percent of area median income and below, based on your household size. If you, you know, if you have a home or you're living outside of that targeted area, we can put funding in. But there are HUD regulations that need to be abided by. So we can spend it beyond the district and that's where most of the money is targeted.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Director Jeffress?
Okay, yeah. Could I just finish Mayor Care with?
I thought you were done.
Well, I was opening it to questions and just to sort of lay out the process going forward. So tonight was sort of everybody's first blush looking at this thing. We're going to have a thirty-day public hearing, public notice process, which will start right at the end of March, run through April. And then this will be back in front of you for action on May fourth. But just wanted to let people know. It'll be posted on our website. Take a look. There'll be a thirty-day public comment period. And with that, now I'm done.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you.
No worries.
Just one opportunity again for councils with any questions or comments. And if there's nothing, I'm just, I'm going to switch over to public. Just if anyone in the public wishes to make a very brief comment on any of the budget items that we workshop tonight, now's the opportunity. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Counselor Khalid?
Not a question, but I just want to thank, you know, Lincoln and the staff for the work that they've been doing, as well as the committee. We were able to fund nine agencies, as Lincoln has stated. And it was unfortunate, we weren't able to fund more than that. I know that last year, we were able to fund all of them, which was very historic, as I know. But I hope the council really supports these agencies who are really doing critical work and critical, you know, needs in the, in the community, such as, you know, one of many is the Trinity Jubilee Center, who really stepped up in the pandemic.
It's amazing. It's, thank you so much for bringing that up because truly the list, the work that, that list of those people do, it's amazing in our community. And our budget would be, it skyrocketed if we didn't have these nonprofits providing these services for us. So thank you, Counselor Khalid. Any other questions or comments? How did we do tonight, Counselor Chalinas? Good job, everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, real quick, just a reminder, and this is also a reminder for the public. Next week, there are no budget workshops. There is a city council workshop on Tuesday. There is no workshop on Thursday. We resume the budget workshop on April sixth. That reviews all the general government budgets at that point in time. And we wrap up the, pretty much wrap up all of the kind of running through the departments that Thursday. And then we convert back to general discussions and reviewing your parking lot or the list items and take direction from you on how you'd like to proceed with the budget.
Great, thank you. All right, as always, staff, we really appreciate the work that's been going on with this budget process. And thank you, councils, and we'll see you all next week.